Roll call please. For flag allegiance.
We declare the House of Representatives to adjourned. The House of Representatives has the authority to adjourn. The House of Representatives has the authority to adjourn. The House of Representatives has the authority to adjourn.
Roll call please.
Karen.
Here.
Karen.
Here.
Karen.
Here.
Roll call.
Here.
Quick roll call.
Item number three, to make a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? We need to add D to four D. The superintendent's report, we need to add principals' reports. Okay. Anything else? Roll call please.
Roll call.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Edson.
Yes.
Item number four, superintendent's report. Motion passes. Okay. I'm gonna start, I'm gonna jump to C on the roof update. Right now, we're completely 100% watertight as of August 6th. And the only thing that they are doing right now are final trim options. If you look at the screen, you can kind of get an idea. You can get an idea of what they're doing that's left. You know, they have arguments with caulking and whatnot, but they're taking, these will be white, and they snap over top of these, and they're mounted to the side of the building. And these will be around the whole building, even up top, in the seventh and eighth grades. They're in the process of finishing that trim, just around there, just the finishing touches to the South Side Middle School roof. The roof itself is complete. Here are a couple pics. This is kind of what we knew was happening. You see all those dark marks? Those dark marks are just from the roofers when they were up there. They did tear off two full roofs over the entire structure. Initially, we had a couple, the contractors tell us there were only one roof, but there were two roofs over the entire structure. And we did not have any of the metal roofing, the base roof underneath damaged. So that was real positive. We had absolutely no decking, metal decking that needed to be replaced. So, kind of give you an idea, this is across the offices down that hallway. On your left and to the right is down the fifth and sixth grade hallway. First one that I have up there was the, on this side is the seventh and eighth grade. And this side is the fifth and sixth grade. If you're looking, here's the hatch that you can come out onto the roof. Yeah, that's that same pic. So, you know, I feel really comfortable and confident that we should pretty much not have any roofing issues for the next 20 to 30 years. So, someone else won't be able to plan it at that point, but maybe one. So, a little bit about going into this school year. I'm excited about some of the things that we had going on. I did pass out to all of you some information from the straight A grant. And Katie, I did call you back, but I didn't get through to you. On the straight A grant, we're part of a group of schools in Columbiana County. Us, Letonia, Lisbon, Palis, Southern Level, Preston, Wellsville, all of which participated through Columbiana County ESC. And we're just so fortunate, I think, to be involved. We're gonna be able to add some STEM education beyond what we had already had planned. A lot of the things that you heard in the last couple months about dual credit options, some industry standard credit that we were already doing. We're gonna have some opportunities that are gonna be beyond that for not only the high school, but the middle school and the elementary in terms of STEM education. Some of the things that are purchased on there, and you have a copy of the sheet which has a rundown of the cost associated with the grant. There are some out-of-pocket costs that will be in the future. The first three years of the grant has the course costs built into it for content for the high school, the primary elementary, and the middle school. Those are all built into it. There are future costs as you look to sustain this model, what all of the districts will be looking forward to in terms of how do we continue to move this on? We implement it, how do we sustain it? So, we're looking at this model as far as where we are three years out, and some costs that will happen moving out in the, outwards of six years. You know, we're gonna have workstations, store boxes, carts for tablets, for Polycom machines, TVs and carts, computers, 85-inch TVs and mounts, cabling, video projectors. You know, the tablets are gonna be 30 for the elementary, 30 for the middle school and the cart. One of the things we're looking for, the new generation of iPads, is the direction we want to go with that. And we're just excited to have some of this equipment, some of this course content and this stuff coming our way, and all based on being in a consortium with a whole group of districts within this county that, just so excited to have the chance to do that. Annual district supplies, teacher training, and installation and maintenance are among some of the costs that you see that will be associated with that. So essentially, you know, $100,000 of benefit to all of us is tremendous, tremendous. So, looking forward, some of the real exciting things moving forward, probably the thing that I'm happiest about is, you know, we're back to our concepts here in Columbiana. Pre-K is four, our five through eight is intact now, and we're back to nine, nine through 12. Our offices are moved back, Mr. Buzzard's group is back to where it was a couple years ago. And the best part about it, no water in the hallways, no water in the classrooms. So, we're excited that we have a safe and secure environment, and we're back to full steam with the things that we're doing. We're really welcome to extra space. I know moving the fifth grade down there was a good option for that year. To bring them back and expand what we're doing is tremendous. You know, some of the things that I have listed on here, as we've expanded our technology back, so now we have Mr. Moser who's moved over from the middle school science and is gonna do technology at the middle school and elementary. Those increased offerings were necessary. When we moved the grade levels, those were some of the things we had to look at pulling away from for the short term. So, we're able by having the room and the space, we're able to bring back that technology piece that's so important, I think, to our district, that puts us where we want to be with technology. One of the other additions that we made was space, and to be able to do so, was we added a half-person in the music area. We wanted to strengthen our instrumental, strengthen our vocal, and what we did was we moved our elementary, middle up to the middle school and high school. Hopefully, we can expand our content that way, we can give kids more options, and certainly give them some, a stronger music program with more opportunities. So, not a tremendous amount of staffing added, but it certainly was enough for us to allow us to expand the things we need to do to strengthen our music program. You know, we increased dual enrollment options at our high school. I think that was one of the goals we wanted to do. We wanted to put that industry standard certification for that computer course. One of the other things that we've implemented for this coming school year is Transfinders' bus routing software. And I'm in the process now, and I have a great appreciation for the routes, the time invested in what our drivers do to make sure they pick up and get kids to and from our district at home safe. And it's just a nice eye-opener for me. I'm actually doing the training in the software. I'll be running the software, I'm working with Kim Van Cleek, so that he's able to do that. But I have a nice appreciation for what they're doing, what our drivers do. So, right now, I'm in the process of sitting down with each one of the drivers and going stop by stop, person by person, who they're picking up, where they're going, what turns they're making. We're gonna put it in the software. We hope by mid-year next year, if we can make some modifications, the bottom line is to hopefully be a little bit more fiscally responsible with what we're doing in transportation, and hopefully save some money. Save some money on breaks because we can eliminate a couple stops or combine some stops and/or go with a more efficient route than what we're currently going. Eliminate some of the overlapping that's happening. So, that's exciting. We hired some highly qualified new teachers this year. The hiring this year was, for us, I just felt really super good about the personnel that we had available to us and the people who committed to Columbiana schools. We have staff members who went out and they left other districts to come to Columbiana. We have staff members that said, "You know what? I have a certain number of years. It's worth it for me to be in Columbiana schools, to be a teacher in Columbiana schools, and I might not make as much in the short term coming to make this move." We have teachers that, we just, we didn't have enough spots to interview. We had that many folks that are interested in being involved in our district. So, it's exciting, very exciting. I'm very happy and pleased about the response of some of the fillings that we need to fill. I just had, I was telling Mr. McCombe just a second ago that I had a young lady that I interviewed that graduated here from Columbiana, maybe it was Wisconsin, I just said. Graduated from Columbiana, went back once to be in Columbiana, has an opportunity to come with us, and just so excited to come to Columbiana schools and teach and work with our kids. So, that's just exciting. There are excellent, excellent folks out there that we're able to bring on board. Some of the technology upgrades with the new testing format. Jason, can you expand a little bit on some of the tech stuff that we've moved out?
Sure. We've been busy this summer moving our fifth grade back over to the middle school, getting those classrooms ready, moving smartboards and everything to get them ready. Moving the office back over to the middle school. We had joined our high school PA system to the middle school, so we could save money by not having to buy a new PA system. When we closed that office, so we've been in the process of switching things back with no additional cost to the district, so we can make all those things happen. We're moving our server room back to the middle school, so that we realize better speeds, connection speeds for our elementary students and teachers, so that they can take advantage of that direct fiber connection, which wasn't possible with part of the middle school closed down. We've installed 21 security cameras so far in the high school. We have about 25 to 30 more to go between the middle school and the elementary school. I'd like to thank Jimmy Marino and Josh Boone for all their work and all the student staff. The savings that we're gonna realize by doing that in-house is somewhere between $25,000 and $30,000. So, them taking on the running all of the wire and configuring the cameras, it's just been amazing, and Joe Warkle helping out with the DVR configuration, setting all that up. It's just really been a good team effort. As far as, now I guess I'll move on to some. Wireless upgrades for the middle school, we're putting in new access points. Still cheaper for us to do business class individual access points than to buy a controller-based system. It works for us, we don't have a lot of wireless down issues, teachers complaining that wireless isn't working. We do continue to monitor that particular situation, and we'll make a jump when we need to, but right now, we're doing okay. We've done some upgrades to our wiring closets with some more PoE gigabit switches, preparing imaging, all the computers, laptops, notebooks, getting everything ready for the one-to-one initiative, all that's been underway. Think Gate, I-Learn, Schoology considerations run, we have a training on Thursday, so that we can bring some social media in, so that we have more communication with parents and businesses within the district. We're working on all of that. But as far as the next generation assessments, preparing for Park and Ohio Air, we added three new labs this summer. Some would say that might seem like overkill considering we have a number of labs in each building already, but the demand for testing and scheduling testing for all of our grade levels, they're really, it does necessitate doing some upgrades to our labs and so forth. So, we'll have a new Windows lab at the elementary school, we'll have a new Windows lab in the middle school, and we'll have a new Chrome lab in the high school, which is gonna give us some really good experience and expertise in managing a Chrome environment. So, when we have to make a decision regarding netbooks, are we gonna go to Chrome, tablets, Windows again, we're gonna have a much better understanding of how each of those environments work, you know, and some of the drawbacks and benefits from each one of those. And Mr. Muck already alluded to Mr. Moser, I'm so excited to have him as part of our tech staff. Park preparation, getting kids ready, you know, Park is more than just students being able to give us the information on a test, it's them being able to work with the technology tools in order to demonstrate that they've mastered that knowledge. So, having someone that the kids really are excited about, who's gonna be able to make technology fun, exciting, cool, but also very useful for them not only just to prepare for that test, but for real-world applications in STEM. So, I don't know if I've hit on everything that you wanted me to.
Yeah, you know, sometimes when you put something up there about technology upgrade in an overview, I just wanted you to touch base, because there's so much more sometimes each one of these bullet points than sometimes what we discussed maybe in our meetings, but there's so much more that goes into some of these things, it's incredible. I think the fact that we've increased some of the security cameras is something that we really wanted to do last year when we had some issues that we had some uncovered areas within the district. I think at this point, we have about every entrance that you can possibly imagine in our building covered to make sure that we know who's in and who's out, and that if we have any kind of breach, that we can work on our local law enforcement rather easily to provide footage of what goes on. So, we're pretty excited about that, and I think that makes me feel a little bit better at the end of the day that we have some increases there. You know, our athletic department is doing a new pass system this year. We're promoting student involvement by offering a $10 fall pass to those kids that are involved in other activities. You know, so if you're on the football team, and you don't find yourself able to get to a lot of other things because of your own practices or not, but you want to get to them, we got a $10 pass that our kids could go to any one of our fall activities and support one another. So, we're pretty excited to try and encourage our students to take advantage of that. We're also putting those passes out to family passes, different passes that are available. We put those in the newsletter now for the second time to try and get folks to call in and let our A.D.s take care of them with a pass. So, we're gonna be able to track that. We're in hopes that all those passes, we'll be able to see the volume of people who come and don't come, we'll be able to scan them, we'll be able to know whether or not they're attending our activities, and, you know, how to get them in. So, that's a real, real positive. Also, within the athletic department is implementation of the student drug testing program. Positive, positive things for us in the law room with our students. I'm looking forward to good, solid results with that. And last but not least, our custodial summer work is almost complete. Our custodians, I have to take my hat off to them. We have a couple of bus drivers that work for us part-time in the summer, and then those two ladies are some of the hardest workers that I think we have in the district. But then our custodial staff and some of the student workers that we've had work, I, sometimes I don't know how they get it done, and Jimmy Marino with the amount of work that he's put in to run in lines and whatnot for security, they just do an awesome, awesome job for us. So, my hat's off to them, and we're gonna be ready for the first day of school, and that's really what this all comes down to for 2014-15. Last thing I wanted to let you know, I targeted last time about the report card, a little bit of an update, they have to lay that report card due to the weather, the testing that happened this past year, that's gonna come out in mid-September now. Some of the things that you can expect in terms of letter grades and things that will not be combined to an overall grade this year, overall grades will be reported in 2016. High school value added will be reported, and EVOS, but no grades until 2016. They've not yet determined what courses will be used for those indicators. So, when they can't tell us what courses they're gonna use necessarily at this point, it would also make it very, very difficult for them to be in, giving us letter grades without knowing what they're testing us. So, that's pretty evident. Additionally, there's a K3 literacy piece to this. The goal of this component is to make progress towards reading proficiency and looking at students who are not on track. So, that's something that we can expect. And this year's change is 80% target to meet the indicator, it used to be 75. So, now it's at 80, and that's gonna, that's gonna put a lot of places in effect for meeting those indicators. I'm proud to report to you that we've passed all of our indicators, and I'm very happy about that. There's a lot of stress on staff and administrators to doing well in meeting our indicators. And the 80, the increase to 80 was one of those things that, you know, we didn't meet one last year at 75. We met it this year at 80. So, we increased, we did well, and I'm pleased to say I know all of those grade level indicators, we're gonna meet those. So, grade 11 will still be targeted to at 85. So, that's all I have for you. I'm ready for the school year. I think our building principals are ready to go. We have some open houses coming up. I know they're gonna talk to you a little bit on the principals' reports, but the concern for me with South Side Middle School, South Side Middle School's gonna be ready, and we're ready to get the year started. We're excited to have our staff back and our students, and we're really excited about some of the new staff members that have joined our team. That's all from our report. Do you have any questions? Thank you very much. Item four D, principals' reports.
I'm looking by the Dixon report and the South Side report tonight from Dixon. Curriculum professional development and Race to the Top, the professional development focus for the 2014-15 school year will support the Year Five Race to the Top goals. Those goals are going to be aligning the assessments to Ohio learning standards and transforming curriculum maps as needed, embedding pre- and post-assessment data into daily lesson planning and instruction, creating student learning objectives, which are SLOs, using online modules and ESC support, and understanding the functionality of the Ohio instructional improvement system for sharing curriculum, lessons, methods, and activities. Also, OTES implementation will continue. Also, progress book standards, progress book standard-based report cards will be implemented at Dixon for K4. OAA scores at Dixon, third grade reading had 88%, math had 95%, fourth grade reading was at 97%, math at 91%, fifth grade reading was at 91%, math at 81%, and science at 91%. Upcoming events in August, Dixon office has reopened, it's open daily 8 to 3. The 18th of August is new student orientation at 11:00 a.m. August 22nd is opening day for teachers, there are no students that day. August 25th is first day of school for grades 1 through 4, kindergarten orientation. August 26th is kindergarten KRA testing and parent meeting by appointment and preschool orientation. August 22nd is kindergarten KRA testing and parent meeting by appointment. August 28th is kindergarten KRA testing and parent meeting by appointment. And reminder, there is no school on August 29th. And a special thanks to the custodial staff, especially John Dolan and Nick Bocka at Dixon for their hard work this summer. Not to reiterate too much, but we have returned to South Side. The roof is finished. I did a walk-through later this afternoon, 'cause I know we had some rain. It's nice and dry over there, nothing, I found nothing, no leaks. Work continues to finish the cleaning of the building. Maintenance also finished repairing some ceiling tile, floor tile, which have been damaged throughout the past few years with moisture and water damage. And as Mr. Muck said, we're confident that we're going to be ready for opening day. South Side Middle School sports, football, volleyball, cross-country cheerleading squads are forming. We have full squads everywhere this year. They're practicing for the fall season. And this year volleyball will kick off South Side Middle School season on August 25th with a trip to United for a seventh and eighth grade volleyball match. Important dates coming up, South Side Middle School is now open. On the 21st, we're going to have basically an open school for the day, and invitation, I've put the invitation out, from 8 to 3. There's nothing formal planned yet, although I will say that I think we're gonna be ready, I think we're in good shape, and I'm probably gonna go back and do an off-call, and maybe three times during the day, I'll actually give a tour. But basically, we have it advertised, the building is open for people to come in any time during the day and walk around. I have some signs that are gonna be made up, so they know which teachers are where. Although there's new names on the signs, it's not gonna help them too much to realize which teachers are, because a lot of them are new, they've never met them. I already said district in-service on 22nd, first day of 25th. No school on the 29th for Labor Day. And our big open house will be September 3rd from 6 to 7:30. Also, I'd like to thank all the maintenance workers and custodians at South Side Middle School for their hard work, as Mr. Muck said. It's amazing how much they have accomplished, and it looks great, we're gonna be ready to go. And it's, I don't know, just, it's kind of a funny feeling to be back and having that building completely open, and it's dry. Like you said, there's no buckets, and there's no more jokes, and there's no more ceiling tile that I want to poke with a pencil to see if it hits me on the head, you know, with all the water hanging down in it. And it's almost, it's like going back to a new building. Mrs. Steve was making fun of me today, 'cause I was cleaning out closets and purging, she says, "What are you doing? We're starting soon." I said, "I don't know, I just feel like a, it's a new job, it's a new building, it's a new office." I think that's gonna carry over to some of the teachers too, with the changes that have been made. But those are the good news reports from Dixon and South Side.
Okay. Copy of the high school report is under Board Chair. I kinda wanted to lead off tonight with a House Bill 487 update and how it affects high schools. Class of 2017, that's the sophomores this year, will be the last class to take the OGT. The new requirements will take effect with the class of 2018. And as Mr. Muck and Mr. Martin alluded to, this is gonna be starting our new generation of testing, all online, and that's why the need for the computer labs. In addition, the class of 2018 will have the opportunity to take a nationally recognized college exam for free. Looking right now like it's gonna be the ACT, so that'll be all juniors. We wanna congratulate all of our students who earned a five, that's the highest score that you can receive in the AP exams. That included Jesse Canella in calculus and English language and composition, Clayton Cooper in English literature and composition and U.S. government, Tommy Coach in calculus, Dylan Randolph in calculus, Alexis Schnarenberger-
Dylan Randolph in calculus, Alexis Schnarenberger in calculus, and Connor Witherow in calculus. And congratulations to all of our students who signed up to take AP courses. This year, looking back at the records, we had ten additional students who took AP courses and as Mr. Mook told you, we wanna look at expanding our dual credit and AP is one of those avenues, so congratulations to all our students signed up. I wanna echo thanks to Mr. Marino and the custodial staff that did a great job this summer as always and school's looking great and they're on schedule for opening. And with the additional cameras and things, they were really, really under the gun this year. Student events, some things we have coming up. Meet the Team will be this Sunday. Festivities start at two-thirty and go for majority of the night, that is this Sunday the seventeenth. New student orientation will be Tuesday the nineteenth at seven PM. Student government will be providing snacks and a tour. Myself, Mr. Martin, Mrs. Waller will be providing information to students. Under athletics, football practice is going well, forty-three students are on the roster, some new coaches. Got a scrimmage coming up this Saturday, Coach? Girls soccer, we have seventeen girls participating. We wanna wish good luck to Coach Kramer, our new soccer coach. Boys soccer, they have around seventeen on the roster, practice is going well. Cheerleading, seventeen on the roster. They will be participating in the Campfield Fair, August twenty-seventh around eleven. I wanna thank Mrs. Charshan, she's done a great job with the girls. Volleyball, they have thirty-one girls participating. Girls golf, we have eight girls on the roster, I believe all of those girls are returning, so, and they had a great season last year. Boys golf, we have ten on the roster and I wanna say welcome to our new coach Jeff Jackson. Cross-country, we have eight on the roster, Coach Boggs is doing a good job, she's out there working with them. And the band, Ms. Loney reports the band is looking great, I hear them every day, they're sounding very good. Some things coming up with the band, they're gonna be participating in Campfield Fair on August twenty-eighth, Niles Band Night on September third at seven-thirty PM, and the Street Fair. We talked about Meet the Team, new student orientation, teacher's first day is twenty-second, students' first day is twenty-fifth, and the cheerleading and band show. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five. Don't believe we had a request for public input. Item number six. Don't believe we need an executive session, the first one. So let's move to item number seven.
Consider approving the July 2014 financial reports.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Laura, I just have one and it's probably more of a question than it is anything else. When I look at the monthly board report, that shows in the bottom before transfers the negative this year, but then we're in the black next year, am I reading that correct?
The negative here is projected for this year, these are the actions just for the month, for July. We don't have next year's on there yet.
Right.
Yeah, we are projecting to be in the negative.
Okay.
This current school year.
But then next year, we look like we're in better shape by then, is that correct? With these projections?
These don't project next year, we'll be doing that with the five-year forecast in October.
And this really isn't looking at anything but...
Beyond this current year.
Yeah, okay. That's what I thought, all right, thank you. The only question I have, anything else? Roll call.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Rockham?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number eight.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving Ohio School Council's cooperative purchasing program and membership, including APA for physical year fifteen at the cost of two-hundred dollars per district plus eighteen cents per pupil, minimum three-hundred fifty dollars and maximum two thousand, with an additional fee of three-thousand-two-hundred dollars for twenty hours' use of the legal hotline programs.
I'll second that. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Clark?
Yes.
Rockham?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Item number eight passes. Item number nine.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving the employment of Jennifer Sloan as the elementary school tutor for the 2014-15 school year as recommended by the superintendent, with compensation at twenty-five dollars per hour and five hours per day, pending verification of all credentials.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Rockham?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number ten.
Make a motion to consider approving the employment of Jennifer Rogers as the middle school gifted intervention specialist for the 2014-15 school year, as recommended by the superintendent, compensation accordance with the board-approved schedules, pending all verifications of all credentials.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Rockham?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number eleven.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving employment of Kyle Penrod as middle school science teacher for the 2014-15 school year as recommended by superintendent, compensation accordance with board-approved schedules, pending verification of all credentials.
I'll second that. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Clark?
Yes.
Rockham?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number twelve.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving employment of Jordan Graham as the middle school math teacher for the 2014-15 school year, as recommended by the superintendent, compensation accordance with board-approved schedules, pending verification of all credentials.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Rockham?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number thirteen.
Consider approving employment of Richard Prescott Jr. as middle school science teacher for the 2014-15 school year as recommended by the superintendent, compensation accordance with board-approved schedules, pending verification of all credentials.
I'll second that. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Prescott, welcome to Columbian. Item number fourteen.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving employment of Mark Bush as high school health and physical education teacher for the 2014-15 school year as recommended by the superintendent, compensation accordance with board-approved schedules, pending verification of all credentials.
I'll second the motion. Discussion? Roll call.
Clark?
Yes.
Rockham?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number fifteen.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving employment of Corey Reddabob as high school math teacher for the 2014-15 school year, as recommended by the superintendent, compensation accordance with the board-approved schedules, pending verification of all credentials.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Rockham?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number sixteen.
Just real briefly, if I can, Jack, about these teachers that we're hiring. You know, there was some folks from the community that came in and commented in reference to some of the teachers that left and some that, you know, we were losing some teachers and good teachers, you know, as with any employment, and we all know this, that, you know, people move on. But the greatest thing about what's happened with all this is, is after reading the resumes of who we've hired, I feel complete confidence and I'm quite excited about the fact of who we've hired and what their credentials are and what they're gonna do to enhance the education for the students within our school district. And I think it's just superior because that's really what it's about, educating these students and giving them the greatest experience they could ever have while they're going to elementary, high school, middle school, and making sure they're ready for the real world when they leave here. So I just say kudos to Mr. Mook for what he's done with the interview process and the principals and things, and I think it's just awesome that we put together this great team to continue the success and achievements of Columbian High School. I think it's awesome. So, moving on, I'd like to make a motion to consider approving employment of Larry Bothin as elementary special education title one aide for the 2014-15 school year as recommended by the superintendent, compensation accordance with board-approved schedules.
I'll second that. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Rockham?
Yes.
That motion passes. Item number seventeen.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving employment of the following personnel for the 2014-15 school year, as recommended by the superintendent, with compensation accordance with board-approved schedules, pending verification of all credentials as listed below.
I'll second that. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Clark?
Yes.
Rockham?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Item number eighteen.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving employment of the following personnel on a supplemental contract for 2014-15 school year, as recommended by the superintendent, with compensation accordance with the board-approved schedules as listed below.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? During that, roll call, please.
Rockham?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number nineteen.
Consider approving the employment of Jeff Jackson on a supplemental contract for the 2014-15 school year as head golf coach, as recommended by the superintendent, compensation accordance with the board-approved schedules.
I'll second that. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number twenty.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving employment of Ryan Wolf on the supplemental contract for the 2014-15 school year as head baseball coach, as recommended by the superintendent, with compensation accordance with board-approved schedules.
I'll second that. Any discussion? I for one am happy to hear that we're hiring a baseball coach this early in the year. With that, roll call, please.
Clark?
Yes.
Rockham?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number twenty-one.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving employment of the following personnel as director, supervisor, or coach of a pupil activity program for the 2014-15 school year, as recommended by the superintendent, with compensation accordance to the board-approved schedules, pending verification of all credentials, as listed below.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Rockham?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number twenty-two.
Consider approving employment of the following personnel as director, supervisor, or coach of a pupil activity program for the 2014-15 school year, as recommended by the superintendent, with compensation accordance with board-approved schedules, pending verification of all credentials, which be the head girls soccer coach, Sean Kramer.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number twenty-three.
Consider approving employment of the following personnel as director, supervisor, or coach of a pupil activity program for the 2014-15 school year, as recommended by the superintendent, with compensation accordance with board-approved schedules, pending verification of all credentials, head cross-country coach, Crystal Zambina-Bogg.
I'll second that. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Clark?
Yes.
Rockham?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Item number twenty-four.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving the following personnel as volunteer for a pupil activity program for the 2014-15 school year, as recommended by the superintendent, enlisted below.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Rockham?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Item twenty-four passes. Item twenty-five.
Make a motion to consider accepting the resignation of Christine Lapikas, middle school intervention specialist, effective July twenty-four, two thousand fourteen.
I'll second that. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number twenty-six.
I'd like to make a motion to consider accepting the resignation of Tyler Best, elementary aide, effective August sixth, two thousand fourteen.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Clark?
Yes.
Rockham?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number twenty-seven.
I'd like to make a motion for approving parental leave for Joanie Camel, elementary teacher, for the 2014-15 school year.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Rockham?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number twenty-eight.
Consider approving parental leave for Doreen Holtz, elementary teacher, for the 2014-15 school year.
I'll second that. Discussion? Roll call.
Karen?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number twenty-nine.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving parental leave for Megan Hauk, elementary teacher, for the 2014-15 school year.
Second that. Discussion? Roll call.
Karen?
Yes.
Rockham?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Item number thirty. Motion passes.
Number thirty, I'd like to make a motion to consider approving leave of absence for Daniel Vargo, high school science teacher for Ohio STRS disability retirement purposes, effective August twenty-second, two thousand fourteen.
So does that mean that Dan is retiring or?
Through STRS and disability, he can, he could come back. So this is a little bit different than a straight retirement resignation. He can't come back. His situation necessitates him moving in this direction at this point.
Well, with that, he's a great individual, great person, and God bless him on his ventures of what he needs to do. So I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? I would probably echo those words, sorry to see this motion coming before us and hopefully Dan is going well. Roll call, please.
Rockham?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.